Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Jamestown Public School Board to order. It is Monday, October 21st, 2024 at 5:30 PM in the Thompson Community Room at the middle school. Please note that we had new board member orientation tonight at 4:30 in the district office conference room. I'd like to welcome all those in the audience with us this evening. Thank you for coming. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our mission under oath and visible in every day and justice.
Does the board have any conflicts of interest to declare for this meeting tonight? Any conflicts of interest? Any conflicts of interest? If not, moving on. Jamie, would you be willing to read the school board norms?
The board developed norms are to share and respect opinions and speak with united voice once a decision has been reached, execute all duties of the school board in compliance with the North Dakota Sentry Code, properly prepare for meetings, and commit to assessing board effectiveness and ensure high-quality governance for all stakeholders.
Thank you, Jamie. Moving on to our consent agenda, would the board like anything removed or have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion? Motion by Jason, second by Dan. We have a motion, a second for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion approved. Moving into our regular agenda, tonight we have some recognition. We have service awards. Jason, would you read the service awards and as your name is called, please come over this way and then we're going to put you right up center here for a photo.
Thank you. Ten years of service to Jamestown Public Schools. Michael Dietz, Lee Meyer, Lee Meyer, Mindy Skunberg, Randa Carlson, and Jennifer Stavum. Twenty-five years of service to Jamestown Public Schools, Lori Roberts.
Okay. Under correspondence, we don't have anything this evening. Under reports, I think we'll wait and if our student council person shows up, we'll let them give their report. Under board education, we have education competency pathways to teacher licensure. Dr. Luck.
Thank you. So you have my written report. The, you know, with so many, with a teacher shortage, I thought it would be valuable to have a conversation around what are the pathways to licensures for teachers? Sometimes we think very narrowly about what options we have, and that is simply a four-year degree. And there actually are different pathways, and I think it's important, especially in this environment of challenging workforce, that we understand what options are, exist for individuals to become licensed. And so first, I thought I would share just the difference. Sometimes we talk in education language and we think about, and we use terms and maybe not everybody understands what they are or is at least not in the nomenclature as much as it is for teachers. But really, we have a couple of different pathways. If you think about a license, go down into credential and then even a more narrow band into endorsements. So if it was easy, you would think that we would get all of these from the same place, and we don't. We have two different agencies that have responsibilities for different aspects of this. So the Education Standards and Practices Board covers most of these. They cover most of licensures, most of credentials, and all of endorsements. But the Department of Public Instruction does have some credentials that are required. So you might go and get a license from ESPB, an endorsement from ESPB, but a separate credential from the Department of Public Instruction. That's just the way it works. You know, in the past, just a little historical information, in the past, those were, you know, joint agencies and they were separated out, just a bureaucratic move about forty years ago. But a license is mainly what we think about, and that just verifies that an individual has met the minimum standards. Generally speaking, not in all cases, but generally speaking, when we think of that, that is somebody that has completed a teacher education program and has a four-year degree, but I'm going to go through a little bit later how there's actually options for those that do not have four-year degrees in education. A lot, that can look a lot of different ways, in-state, out-of-state, what we call an OSA license, an alternate access provisional probationary thirty-year life, those are all examples of license that are issued through ESPB. You know, if you go down that funnel, a credential, that's specific qualifications to teach in a field or subject area. Generally speaking, that's additional coursework. In some cases, that's certain kinds of testing that you might have to take or training or certifications. Some of the examples of credentials you could see would be a counselor, principal, librarian. So in that instance, an individual might have, say, an elementary education degree. And they want to pursue an administration credential, so they would get additional coursework, reach out to the Department of Public Instruction, and they would have that teaching degree, which we all have to maintain, so I have to maintain a teaching degree. But I also have to maintain a credential for a superintendent. And so that credential would fill that role. In an endorsement, that's another authorization that allows somebody who has that license as a teacher to work outside of their primary certification. So if I had a, so if I had, well, we've had this in the past, an elementary teacher that goes back and takes a praxis exam to become eligible, to be endorsed, to teach in a different area. CTE is one way that we, is one area that we see that quite a bit. Elementary teacher, very common pathway, elementary teacher takes a praxis, teach family and consumer science. In almost every program across the state that has FACS, we aren't graduating FACS teachers. Those are individuals that have different credentials, different license, that take a praxis exam to be certified to teach family and consumer science. So they may, in an endorsement, that might be additional coursework, that may be taking a test. There's a couple of different pathways to get that additional endorsement, so not quite as involved as a credential, but still allows you to teach outside of your general field. So in tradition, the traditional licensure pathways, that's what we think of. An individual gets a, whether they're in-state or out-of-state, they get a license to, they get a four-year degree in a teacher, from a state-approved teacher education program. That's the traditional pathway that we think about. Generally speaking, that first, that first license is somewhere between two to five years, and then the renewal gets every five years. The alternate licensure pathways, this is really where I want to focus on because this is the expanded ways in which individuals could become licensed to teach in North Dakota. The alternate access license is a one-year license for three years. It's basically a pathway for an individual in a documented shortage area, documented shortage area, to get a teaching degree or to get licensed. They, if they have a bachelor's degree in a particular content area, they can get three successive one-year license. That gives them the bridge to complete their education coursework and become licensed, so they have an opportunity to work concurrently while they're fulfilling the rest of their requirements. We see that, I would say maybe five to ten percent of the time, when we see individuals that are not in a traditional pathway, maybe five to ten percent of the time we see alternate access. American Board Certification for Teacher Excellence, so the American, in the American Board pathway, if you have a bachelor's degree and then you pass two American Board tests, you get a licensure from ESPB to teach for two years. But then, in the course of that two years, there's some criteria that you have to follow. You have to be involved in the mentoring program, you have to take the state-required coursework, let's say for Native American Studies, special populations like Special Education Services, and then you have a clinical experience that you need to complete as well. I would say this is about the same as the alternate access, maybe a little bit less. So if we said five to ten percent for alternate access, I'd say it's about five percent for American Board. And we have individuals in the district that have gone through each of these to receive certification. What I see, especially in Jamestown, as the most common pathway, alternate pathway, is the transition to teaching program. So that is a pathway specific for industry professionals. So if you have taught, or if, I'm sorry, if you have worked for six thousand hours in an industry with specific experience in that industry, you would be eligible to receive a teacher's license through the transition to teaching program. So once you're approved, you're immediately able to teach in the classroom. But you have, again, concurrently, kind of similar to, similar to the alternate access, you are able to teach concurrently, and then you have to complete the rest of your pedagogy coursework, so your teaching coursework. You have to participate in mentoring, you have to participate in professional development along the lines. Basically, it's helping to prepare that individual to move from industry into a classroom. In all of these circumstances, they are able to go immediately into a teaching position. There's a couple other pathways that you can utilize for teachers of record. One of the newest is what they call teaching permits. This is not, it's a, it's a short-term solution. It's not a pathway to licensure. So an individual with a teaching permit, there's not a bridge to the teaching license. It is a short-term solution for districts, a short-term solution for an individual. But it is kind of similar to the transition to teaching program, if they have four thousand hours of relevant work experience over the past five years, they may be eligible for a teaching permit. So that allows them to be a teacher of record for up to three years. The caveat to that is they cannot work in a core content area. This would more along, be more be along the lines of somebody working in a specialist area, like art. Somebody that has that four thousand hours of art experience could, in a short-term, teach for three years under the teaching permit. Again, not a license, not a pathway to license. The most recent is the pre-service teacher authorization, which allows for an individual that is completing their student teaching experience to serve as a teacher of record. So essentially, they are receiving a similar experience by student teaching, but they are also serving as a teacher of record in that classroom. So in all of these instances that I have referenced, traditional, the traditional pathway, all of the alternative pathways and the other pathways, all of those exist in Jamestown Public Schools with the out, with the exception of the teaching permit. There's not anybody in the district that holds a teaching permit. That's never a position that we've hired. In all of these other examples, we have. One additional support that I want to, I have just a few seconds left on my timer here that I wanted to outline, I don't want to do that, is we recognize that, you know, the part of the traditional teaching experience has a scaffolded and supported internship program, student teaching, that serves an extremely important role for new teachers to gain that experience, to have somebody to model with, to have somebody to support, to ask questions of. We want to emulate that experience, whether a student teaching experience is provided or not. A lot of the instances that we've gone through already, the alternate access, American Board Certification, although a little bit more for that, transition to teaching, the pre-service authorization, they lack that. And so what we've put in place, for all of those, we expect an individualized training plan, and you can link that if you'd like to look at. We align that to our Marzano Teacher Education Framework. And so we individualize that for anybody that doesn't have a student teaching experience. We want to emulate the outcomes the best that we can, even if we're not giving them that structured student teaching experience. We still want them to feel mentored, we still want them to feel supported, somebody that they can ask questions to and feel supported for throughout their program so we can have the same outcomes, because we want these individuals to be teaching ten years from now. So we want to make sure that their experience is a good one. So we've created that individualized training plan that is built for each and every individual that doesn't have that student teaching experience. Alongside that, we provide mentoring, whether they are new to the district, whether they're new to the profession, whether they're a teacher, whether they're an administrator. We include some type of mentoring program. So people new to the profession, they get the state mentoring program for teachers or administrators. And if they are just new to the district and they have experience, we have a district mentoring program as well. So with that, I would stand for questions.
Any questions from board members? Jason?
You used the term documented shortage area under alternate licensure pathways. Is that a specific designation? What are the criteria for that? Because I would think we're there in a lot of areas.
It's actually every position in a school except for superintendents. It's every classroom teacher and building principals. Superintendents are the only one. I would actually disagree with that. But that's, and it's a list compiled by ESPB and the Department of Public Construction.
And is that based on just current openings?
Correct. Current openings. Yeah. Superintendents were on that list up until two or three years ago, and then we were removed.
Any other questions from the board? If not, thank you. And moving on, we have the strategic plan, progress monitoring, and strategic focus five, resource management, and planning goal three. Dr. Luck, are you?
Okay, I'm ready. So I have a number of slides that I'm going to skip over. I'll allow it an opportunity for questions. I think there's, when you look at our resource management and planning goal, there is a lot of historical information that this board and the district has compiled over the last, in particular, five or six years related to resource management and planning. And this board is well aware of that. I provided that because it provides historical context, and if anybody is watching, wants to learn more about that information, I'm not going to talk about it in this presentation, because this is about progress monitoring, but I think it tells part of the story that I think is important as well. So I'm going to skip ahead with some of these slides. But resource management and planning, our specific goal is to develop an action plan to address future enrollment facility needs through 2034. Okay? And we, there's a couple of components in there that we'll talk about at the end as well. You know, I think it's fair to ask the question of what the district has done from a facility planning standpoint over the last five years. Listed that there. Again, previous action statements that we have, our previous steps that we have taken, developed a problem statement. We have an annual capital projects plan that we utilize. It's on a rolling ten-year plan that we utilize to help make facility determinations and priorities each and every year. But we have planned that out for a ten-year span. We had an enrollment facilities task force that met. You can QR code that to see an example of that final report. And ultimately, this board came over the span of a few years, used a lot of different data, a lot of different discussion points, our enrollment facilities task force, to determine and committee meetings, the facilities committee, to come up with four options. And I will kind of outline them as, option one is the status quo. Really, what we're looking at problems, we're looking at two competing problems. One is declining enrollment, and one are, one is challenging facilities, facilities that don't meet our needs right now, won't meet our needs in the future. So we have two competing and almost to some degree contradictory types of, types of problems in the same statement. You know, because I can understand the questions of, well, boy, if we're declining in enrollment, why are we talking about facilities? Because they're two separate problems. We have declining enrollment and the challenges of operations with the declining enrollment, but also we have long-term facility needs. Again, that don't meet our needs right now, and they certainly don't meet our needs in the future. So the status quo and option one is nothing in those two things change. Nothing operationally changes, nothing from a facility footprint standpoint changes. That's the status quo, option number one. Option number two addresses operations, doesn't impact the facility needs that exist now and in the future. Option number three and four are different ways to address both. Operations, what happens in a declining environment, declining enrollment environment, and what happens, and what are the things that we can do to address facility needs now and in the future? So both option three and option four do that. So again, option one, no changes. Right now, we have five elementary buildings. They all have, you know, when you put them all together, we have eight sections of kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. In those five elementaries, that's option one. In option two, you'd retire one single section building because you would move operationally from eight sections to seven sections. So we would, we would no longer need five elementary buildings. You would eliminate one single section building in the, through discussions with the board in the past, that has been Washington. Option three, retire that one single section building, Washington, and retire a two-section elementary, has previously been determined that likely to be Lincoln, and build a two-section elementary on the existing Washington campus. And again, we're trying to look at operational changes and facility changes. Option three does both of those. Option four, another way to address both of those challenges, retiring two single-section buildings. Our two single-section elementary buildings are Louis L'Amour and Washington. One single section, or one two-section elementary, Lincoln, and build a three-section elementary for a total of seven sections on the Washington campus. So those are the, those are the three. Again, option one doesn't address either challenge. Option two addresses operations, but it doesn't address facilities. Option three and four address operations and address facilities. So one of the things that, and I'm not going to talk about this slide, it's pretty busy, a lot to look at, but this is one option for each of these previously identified options. We went through and did a ten-year analysis on a lot of different factors. Financial, taxation, ending fund balance, cost of personnel, other expenditures, mill expectations, the tax rate on different levels of homes, all of that information for each of those options. So we wanted, as a facilities committee and as a board, we wanted to look at these holistically and see, well, we don't want to just say, we think this is going to happen. We wanted to be able to show some evidence of what we believe each of these options would result in over a ten-year span. So here's where the progress monitoring hits, the 24-25 action steps. There are nine different potential steps in 24-25 based on, you know, how things operate throughout the course of this year. The board is going to have some potential options to discuss. So we'll have seven that we will do for sure, that it address our facilities and our resource management. And then there's two that you may choose to do, and I'll get through those. So in the fall, you've already commissioned an additional community group. We had our enrollment facilities task force. They already met, made some recommendations that the board refined. Then we built some options. Now we're coming back to a separate community group and saying, were we right? Are these the right options? What do you think? So it's our process to vet. So there is some connection to that group, but mostly that is a new group. So the board, the administrators, some of those are the same people. One member is the same. We wanted to have some connection, but we wanted new voices. And so we have a new voice, and we're actually meeting next Tuesday is our initial meeting. The board's going to consider in this meeting additional consideration for an enrollment and boundary study. We had that discussion last meeting. You'll make a determination on that hopefully tonight, so give us some direction on what you want to do. We have cohort projections. We don't have scientific calculations. And so it just depends on how exact you want those to be. And then a recommendation in December from that community committee, that's meeting for the first time next week in December, in December, to vet those options and give you feedback. So in the winter, we are going to then look, depending on what option is selected in December. We have to do an analysis and determine that process has already started, but we need to have an appropriate facility and staffing footprint for 25-26. We need time to communicate, we need time to plan, all of those, we need to communicate with our families, what's going to happen. That boundary study is appropriate to help people understand, next year, if we close a building, what's that going to look like for me? What's that going to look like for a teacher? What is that going to look like for a staff member? What's that going to look like for a parent? What's that going to look like for transportation? All of those are things that we need to be talking about in the winter to prepare people for next fall. A consideration that the board will have is an independent survey. One of the things that we've talked about in our facility planning meetings is a survey that might come out and look at those options that have been selected and giving more feedback to the community to say, what is it that we support? So we're not making assumptions. We have data to support that. That's not something, that is a consideration, not something I'm making a recommendation on now, but a point of discussion for the future. We will have, in the spring and summer, another capital projects plan revision. We do that every, we start that process in January, February. We end it in the spring. And then we'll have completed our CTE. And then we'll have completed our CTE facility upgrades by this summer. Actually, it'll likely be sooner than that. So that's for the childcare, for building and trades, for the greenhouse, any, well, whatever else is going to end up in that, that 7,000 square foot building will be there. The last option in the spring, summer, is potential call for a referendum. Again, just like this independent survey, that's not something that is set in stone, that's potential. So I'm putting that down as one of the nine things that could happen. Seven we will do. The eight and nine will really depend on what happens over the next six months. So our next meeting, or our first meeting, as I said, of the community task force will be October 29th in this room. So we're going to do a kickoff. We're going to do some facility tours so those individuals can see those buildings. In some cases, they likely have never been in. You know, if, if, if you've only ever been at Gustner, you, you may not know, if your, if your children have only been in Gustner, you may not know what, what Washington looks like on the inside, or what the boiler looks like at Washington Elementary compared to yours. So we'll do facility tours, and we're going to talk about the master planning process, and I've outlined the purposes of each of those meetings. We could potentially meet five times, and we're anticipating meeting three. But we could meet as many as five. And then December 16th, board meeting, that team will make a recommendation to the board on those options. The JVCTC project, we are doing quarterly progress monitoring, so that's going to be at the November 4th meeting, but just a few items that I can touch on with those, just some general updates, the childcare renovation currently still in the construction phase. You'll actually have, like I said, a report on November 4th, Mr. Gaylor, on that. We're expecting that aspect to be completed during the winter. So we have procedures, license procurement, staffing plan, all of that will be completed before May of 2025. The JVCTC Building Trades Expansion is going to go to bid soon. It was, I was hoping it would be there already, but there are some delays in that process. I, you know, I'm not sure how we can get started in the fall if that isn't done sooner, but this would allow, you know, some, some spillover effect to that building and trades expansion is, that facility is going to be 7,000 square foot, so that's large enough for building and trades plus another program. Then you have the current building and trades area, which will be vacated. So you'll have another area that has potential for a program expansion. That could be in the energy sector, that could be CDL. Those are the areas that we've probably talked about the most are CDL and energy, but there's opportunity for expansion once we create that space. So the greenhouse replacement, that's still in design, but that'll, that'll be a, a pretty quick build once completed. And then our fine arts partnership, which is going to provide culinary arts down at the Art Center downtown, that's, will be completed, likely finalized in the fall of 2025. So my focus has been on those two aspects, the current construction of CTC and the focus, the primary focus on those two challenges in our problem statement of declining enrollment and operational changes and, and the facility changes, or I'm sorry, the facility updates. But this is a 2034 goal, so we have some future focused topics that we'll be dealing with in the span of that 2034 time, but that includes feasibility for pre-K services, any additional programming or expansion to JVCTC. We've been talking about regional satellites. We're kind of landlocked in Jamestown. There's only, if we don't have a regional, regionalized satellite program, there's only so much, so many districts that can come into our district, but if we created satellite programs with, and partnered with other communities and other school districts, we may be able to expand that influence and grow our CTC program. So we're looking at options for that. If you look at the central part of North Dakota, it's a CTE center black hole. We're completely devoid of CTE programming, almost from edge, basically from Edgley all the way up north to Turtle Mountain. And maybe Jamestown and the JVCTC can help to alleviate some of that, that vacuum that exists by partnering with other districts and creating satellite programs. Not atypical, Wapton has, Edgley, for example, is a satellite of the Wapton program. I think that's the model that makes the most sense to grow the central part of the state in CTE. But that's something to look at. And then the exploration of schedules. We looked at elementary schedules to provide a little more collaboration time in the last year, and I think we need to look at the efficiency of the scheduling system that we have, particularly at the high school, and how that could work. But again, that's a long-term 2034 type of conversation. Oh, I should say, all of these are long-term convers, or longer-term conversations. But with that, I would stand for questions.
Any questions from the board? Jason.
I guess more of a comment. I want to, and we all thank those who applied to be on that community committee. That will be an integral part of making this work. And if you, if you weren't fortunate enough to be selected, you know, community outreach will also be an important part of this process. So your voice will be heard. So I just wanted to thank those who are engaging in the district in that way or attempted to.
Thank you. We had, I think, 40, 40 applicants. We can't have a team of 40. So we did have to make some selections, and we tried to consider all the different stakeholder groups and demographics when we're looking at candidates. And so, yeah, I would have loved to say, you know, everybody could be selected, but that's, that's a great problem to have when you have 40 high-quality candidates, but we did have the limit.
We still value all the input that we received, and there'll be other opportunities down the road too, to provide input or just even contacting us or central office as well. So thank you. Good point, Jason. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So we have strategic plan, progress monitoring, strategic focus five, resource management, and planning goal three. Is there a motion? Motion by Dan to accept. Is there a second? Second by Aaron. We have a motion, a second to accept strategic plan and progress monitoring, strategic focus five, resource management and planning goal three. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye oppose, same sign. Motion approved. Moving on to the superintendent's report. You're setting your timer, right?
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
Keep it right here.
Three reports.
Yep. So I had some great feedback from staff related to the years of service recognition, and very much appreciate that we do it. You know, the, the question became, you know, between, up to 10 years and, and through 25, that's a long time. That's a long time to serve. And would it make sense to do increments of five years? And I think the answer to that is, that's a great idea. Let's do that. And the other, the other topic of conversation that came up is, is we do it after, traditionally or historically, we've done it after the fifth year has been completed, or after the 10th year has been completed, after the 25th year is completed, and could we do it in the spring instead of waiting till they've completed that year and then doing it the next year? Yeah. That's, those are easy fixes. I thought they were all good ideas, and we will be looking now in the spring to honor, I wrote in there 10, 15, 20, 25, but I actually think we should do it in just five-year increments. That just makes the most sense. And so we'll, we'll honor those staff in the year that they've completed, or the year that they're working in that five-year increment. And so we'll have another one of these in the spring. So this will be the only year we do it twice. But I think that's a good, logical plan, and if that's one very small way we can help staff feel recognized, I think that's an easy opportunity to honor the work, the hard work that they've provided, the good work that they do for us. JVCTC vision visit, when you see that vision visit, just think of a Cognia. You know, we're doing our school improvement process for the, the K-12 public school system. CTE, the vision visit is the same, is a very similar process specific to career and tech ed. So like the Cognia visit, experts come in, talk with staff, talk with students, look at the program, they make, they assess how we're doing, they make recommendations for how we can improve. That's really what the vision visit is. I asked Mark Wagner, who is the assistant director at State CTE, to come in in February, and he's going to present that report as part of the board education. So when we get that report, you'll hear from Mark on that. But really, the process is the same, and I've outlined what they did in those, those two days, October 8th and October 9th. We appreciate very much that all of these different CTE instructors and program directors came and shared their expertise with us. It only makes us better. So a great deal of appreciation for them, and you can look forward to February here, seeing that report about the good work that's happening there. The TLA, I'll spend only a minute here, but we will again be engaging in a teacher leadership academy. For those that are unaware, it's, it's a partnership through the University of Jamestown and Jamestown Public Schools to receive a graduate degree. It's co-planned and co-taught by University of Jamestown and myself. So I do about 75% of the classroom instruction and the planning, but that is done jointly through UJ and us. That happens over five semesters, and those individuals receive a graduate degree. It's in teacher leadership. It is not a principal pipeline program. This is not about developing more principals. Now, some of those individuals could take advantage of that program and desire to be a principal, but that is not what the program is designed to do. We don't talk about administration in these classes. We talk about how you can empower, be empowered as a teacher, to be a teacher leader in Jamestown Public Schools. So some really neat things about the TLA program is the curriculum, the assignments, the activities, they're, they're all built around Jamestown Public Schools. So when we are learning about school law, for example, we're analyzing Jamestown Public School District policies and situations. Those are the conversations we have that align, that align to school law. We're talking about curriculum development. We're talking about the process to develop curriculum in Jamestown. When we are doing signature assignments, there's a signature assignment in each semester. Those align with the needs of Jamestown Public Schools. So these individuals are doing work that bring great deal of value, not only to them because it's relevant, but it bring, it brings great value to the district. The work that they do supports the work that we do. And again, that makes it relevant for them, makes it awfully important for us. They also, their culminating requirement is an action research plan, or I'm sorry, an action research project. So they develop a problem of practice, something that they see in their building that is, that is a problem, or in their, in their classroom, in their building, they, they research, they analyze what exists in research now around that problem of practice. They design an intervention, and then they assess the efficacy of that intervention. Then they report back. So they're creating a, a report that again helps them, but we learn an awful lot from their action research about our practices in school and how we can be better at Jamestown Public Schools. It's great, a great experience for both. And then these reports are shared with the board. That is part of the requirement that we've instituted, that they present those action research to the community, the board, and their families. So the last neat thing I think about the, about the teacher leadership academy is we have a partnership through the Burgum Foundation that pays half the cost. So if those individuals, half the tuition cost is paid for by the Burgum Foundation, and University of Jamestown has been a wonderful partner, not just in the planning, but they also don't assess our students' fees. So that half cost of tuition is a very, very affordable way for our Jamestown teachers to get a graduate degree if that is what they choose to do. Right now, we have about 50% of our, of our teachers have graduate degrees. In the past, it's been as high as 60-some percent. The decrease is more about just teacher retirements. Our staff is getting younger, and so we want to build that up and provide these opportunities that when our teachers want to pursue a graduate degree, they, they look at that program. So we'll continue to do that. We're anticipating starting summer 2025. Measure four, the, the fourth in this series, I just wanted to talk about measure four in, in, I think sometimes it becomes oversimplified of what measure four is, and I think that's a crux of a communication problem with measure four. And it's very easy to look at the signs and say, measure four eliminates property tax. And this whole focuses on, well, or eliminating tax. How about we say it that way? I want to eliminate tax in general. Okay? This whole, this whole presentation in the series is about, well, what are the alternatives then to measure four? So if measure four were to pass, what else could one expect? Okay? To define measure four, though, we're talking specifically about the elimination of property taxes based on valuation, based on the value of property. That's what measure four at its, at its crux is about. That doesn't mean that there aren't other measures that property tax could be assigned to, or other mechanisms that property tax could be assigned to. It could be assigned to acreage in agricultural land. It could be assigned to square footage in a commercial property or a residential property. So it's talking specifically about ta, about property tax based on valuation. It's a very narrow definition. It's the current definition, but it's a very narrow band of what that looks like. And I think sometimes people think we're going to eliminate property tax, or we're going to eliminate tax. Well, nobody likes tax. I think everybody likes the service that comes with tax, but they don't like the tax. Who doesn't? I, I get it. But I, but I think it is important to look at what that actually states. So measure four, in measure four, 3.1 billion per biennium is the cost of what property, what would have to be replaced by the state legislature. Okay? So let's put the rest of this presentation within the context of 3.1 billion, because if our, if we're talking about potential alternatives, we have to think about, well, what's the goal? What are you trying to fill the bucket of? Well, the bucket's 3.1 billion every biennium. So the first thing that I would hope that our legislators would think about, because it's the legislators that need to decide. When you vote on measure four, you're not voting for a solution, you're voting to end one particular problem. So you're not saying, well, we're going to eliminate property tax based on valuation and replace it with something else. That is left to the legislature to decide. So I would hope that the first thing the legislature would look at is efficiencies. I think that's what we would do in a budget at a school level. If we lost revenue, we wouldn't look at, well, how can we just refill that bucket completely? We would look to efficiencies. Well, what in our budget? You know, whether that's zero-based budgeting, whether it's something else. I would hope that we would first look to efficiencies, and I would hope that's what our legislators do also. They would first look to efficiencies. What are we funding now that we may not need to? Okay? I often hear about the existing pools of dollars that exist at the state level. Mostly that deals with the legacy fund, although there's been a corollary conversation as it relates to schools and the Common Schools Trust Fund. So if we know that the bucket to refill is 3.1 billion, and we know the legacy fund has 11 billion, a little bit under 11 billion, it's not hard to see that that's not a long-term solution to just take what exists in the legacy fund and refill that 3.1 billion dollars every biennium. Well, the legacy fund will be broke, you know, in a decade. So that's not in its, in and of itself the option. That's not the only alternative. Could it be one? Yes, it could. You know, and one thing, as I've talked with community members, that people don't always understand, you know, we, when, sometimes when we talk about the legacy fund, there's a feeling of, oh, what's that, what's it doing for me? How's it helping me? The legacy fund exists. It's got all these billions of dollars in it, and it's not helping me. Well, actually, $500 million was assigned from legacy fund earnings. That's also part of the constitutional measure. Earnings have to be redistributed from the legacy fund to the general fund in the state's budget every year. That's a requirement. There's an earnings calculation. This biennium, it was 500 million. That's already in the state's budget from the legacy fund this biennium. That's been as high as 900 million. So the legacy fund is working for the, in the state's budget, is working for the people. It's where it's directed right now, maybe the questions, but is the money there? Yes, the legacy fund is helping future generations, but it's helping this generation too. So I just wanted to clarify, you know, that earnings do already go into the state's general fund. And the Common Schools Trust Fund, it's not directly related, but I think there's a corollary conversation here. There's this Common Schools Trust Fund. What's it doing for me? It's collecting money. There's billions of dollars. Why aren't we using that to fund education or partially fund education? The answer to that is, it already is. There's a similar earnings calculation. Well, it's a different earnings calculation, but similarly, there's an earnings calculation that the Common Schools Trust Fund money needs to be, and it's constitutionally required, to fund public education. That already happens. It's about $2,100 of the per pupil payment, that 11,000 plus, to about 2,100 in this biennium is from the Common Schools Trust Fund. That's the earnings calculation. About twenty-one hundred in this biennium is from the Common Schools Trust Fund. That's the earnings calculation. It's a direct payment into, or it's a directly connected to the per pupil payment. Next biennium, you can expect that to be about twenty-five hundred dollars of that eleven thousand dollar per pupil payment. So, a significant contribution. But similarly to the legacy fund, if you decide to tap the Common Schools Trust Fund to do some of this other spending, you got to fill that bucket, because that bucket's already tapped. So, you know, these big, sometimes there's these big funds. We don't always understand what the purpose is, don't understand how those dollars are utilized. But Common Schools Trust Fund, probably the most significant one that we hear about related to the Common Schools Trust Fund is construction. Why don't you just tap the Common Schools Trust Fund and help to build schools? Well, if you did that, you'd got to, you'd need to replace that twenty-one hundred dollars per pupil with something else. Those would be state funds or legacy fund or whatever. Measure four doesn't, I talked about this already, but measure four doesn't preclude the legislature from changing the calculation of property taxes from valuation to some other metric, square footage, acreage. That could still occur. The legislature would need to make that decision. Special assessments, and I think we've talked about this before, those are not part of measure four. So, political subs could continue to offer special assessments, and they likely would at a higher degree. So, those things that we just now accept and receive as part of a, you know, part of our tax plan, part of the city's budget, those may be specially assessed now to individual property owners, where in the past, those were just absorbed in the city's budget or a county's budget. If measure four is passed, I believe you could see a lot of fees for service. Right now, again, part of the city's budget is snow removal. Is it conceivable? Now, I'm not saying this will happen, but is it conceivable that every property could start to receive fee assessments like you do for garbage and water and recycling for snow removal? I would think that's possible to do as a way to fill that three point one billion dollar bucket. And then, the last thing I had, a question that I received from a staff member. If a district decreases operational costs, this kind of goes to our progress monitoring piece. So, if we move from eight sections to seven sections and realize that efficiency, are we then paid? Are we going to get less funding because we're operating less? No. The answer to that is, we would still be paid on eight sections, at least the value of that. You know, we don't get, you aren't penalized for operational changes, and you aren't, you are. If we moved to seven sections from eight sections, we would still get the same floor amount. In that instance, you wouldn't have that operational efficiency, you know. It wouldn't shift down, is what I'm trying to say. It would maintain at the minimum of that twenty twenty-four level. So, with that, I'm going to just pause for questions about what I've reported on so far.
Any questions so far about the superintendent's report from the board? Okay, continue on.
So, the MOU is coming. I referenced this in the past, and, you know, my recommendation is approval, but I do want to reinforce that, you know, this really is a short-term solution. We want to be able to offer the program. This isn't the long-term, I don't believe this is the best way that this happens. It is the best solution we have to offer the program. The best-case scenario is we have, we hire and contract an advisor to provide that service to our students instead of seeking out support from another entity. You know, I get concerned about when we have, and I know others have shared concerns with me as well, but we have a negotiated agreement that establishes salaries, compensation amounts for each of these positions. The concern could be that we're circumventing the negotiated agreement, not our intention. This is a short-term fix to be able to provide a program, but I understand the concern. You know, I understand the concern that MOU builds in a certain cost. And I'm sure we have, and I know we have other activities that say, "Well, I would like to be supported in that too." I fundraise a lot to provide my program, and this seems like a slippery slope. I totally get that. But I want to be able to offer robotics, and this is the pathway. And I say short-term because in a perfect world, to me, we would hire, our intent is to hire a assistant-level position that we can build into that head position. We want to be the one holding that agreement for each of our programs that we offer and not a third party. But again, I only see, I'm looking at the short-term of things, and I want to be able to continue a program that's really impacted a lot of kids and has, you know, has been a very good program, and so we want to be able to do that. But in my mind, it's not a long-term solution, and I do have, you know, I don't want to set a precedence that this is how we do these kinds of agreements. And this is not how we offer these, I should say, offer these kinds of programs. I think it is the best I can do right now, but I think a traditional pathway is better for us. Questions about that?
Owen.
Could you explain that a little bit more about, I'm guessing this is unique? We don't have any other MOUs like this to support co-curricular activities. So, what kinds of resources from the district versus fundraising are there for other co-curriculars? And how is this investment?
Most of our co-curriculars, thank you for asking the question. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Most of our co-curriculars are almost completely fundraised. There's a great deal of cost that associates with the robotics, as you can imagine, and so there is, in that agreement, you know, capital for the program. And if I were in a co-curricular that has to a hundred percent fundraise, I might feel like I jumped the line, and I have to fundraise and you don't. And again, I see this as a product of not having that full-time individual contracted by us, a head individual contracted by us that would do that work. In the past, we've been able to grant, you know, fundraise. We've been able to apply for some grants that have helped to support, and without that full-time person, we don't have, or a full-time person, that committed person that's a head position, we don't have some of those same opportunities. So, it's a little apples to oranges in the comparison, but it's just, like I said, it's not a precedent that I feel is something we want to be doing long-term, but I think it is something for now that makes sense. Did I answer your question fully?
Yeah.
Okay.
Karen. Yeah, so I'm a mentor on that program, and there is a level of fundraising that still goes on even with this. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that there's a lot of activity and support from the community as well to engage in the program.
Well, and thank you, Mr. Rappich, for clarifying that. I didn't want to infer, or anybody to infer, that the group doesn't have to do fundraising. Every co-curricular has to fundraise, and they would still continue to have to do that. It's more along the lines of that individual that's in charge of the program. Now, we're giving that to an association instead of having an advisor employed by us, whether it's a teacher, a support staff member, or somebody outside of the school that's employed by us directly to provide that. I would hope that we can build that within a year or two.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, so we had an enrollment and boundary study proposal that you can act on, and I'd be happy to answer questions about that as it comes up in the agenda. We had a lot of insurance committee discussions in the last meeting that I just wanted to bring attention to, to the board. You know, more than anything, it's just about gathering information and perspective from the members, those that are using the plan, on, you know, what those plan design changes are and what potential supports, almost like, you know, serving as a barometer, getting a pulse of how people are feeling. So, when we do make plan design changes, what are the things that people really are connecting to? Is it the premium? Is it the coinsurance? Is it out-of-pocket? What is it that is the biggest driver to interest in our plan and that people like about our plan? We had discussion about adverse selection, and we want to make sure that the plan design changes that we're making are not adverse selection, meaning we want a pool as big as it can be of healthy people. And if we price ourselves out of the market, that pool becomes smaller. The risk becomes spread amongst fewer people. So, we want to make sure that we don't have adverse selection. Now, I don't believe that we do, and I didn't bring it up because I felt that we do, but I think we need to study it and see why are people leaving the plan? Is it just attrition? People are retiring? We're replacing them with people that are already on their parents' health insurance plans until they're, you know, twenty-five? Is that, or through twenty-five, is that what we're seeing, which I think is what it is? Or is there something else, and people have adverse selection? I don't want to take the health insurance plan because out-of-pocket maximum is so high, or the premiums are so high, or the increase was, "I could get a better deal with my spouse." What is it that, you know, what is that, what is that pulse check? And so, we're just going to do a little bit of study related to that, also wanting to look at what our actual versus budgeted over the last five years to make some decisions as we make plan design decisions in the future. And also, we had a great discussion about leveraging our consultant, Brown and Brown, to create some communications, like short videos, that our staff could access. I have a big, I have a big surgery coming up. What steps should I be taking? I'm getting, you know, I'm pregnant. I'm going to, or we're planning to conceive next year. We might have, should I be considering gap insurance? Should I, you know, what are the steps I need to take to make sure that I have all my ducks in a row? What should I do to troubleshoot? What are my, what are those EOB forms they get? What do they mean? We just want to educate our people so they understand their benefit. And so, we're going to leverage that, and it's just something that we're going to be talking about in the future as well. And the last one, it's kind of a sad, not kind of a sad spotlight, a sad spotlight, but you may be familiar with Dr. Dave Smitty. Dave Smitty passed away. He was a former superintendent, served the district, and really served the community of Jamestown for decades. After he retired, stayed in the community of Jamestown, and was as visible a community member and civic servant as you can find. And, you know, I had a chance to attend his funeral, and just a lot of wonderful people sharing, or there to honor an individual that gave a lot to this community, and Dave gave a lot to our school, continued to serve on dollars for scholars, really, until he passed away. So, Dave was Citizen of the Year in two thousand seventeen for Jamestown. If that tells you anything about an individual that's transplanted here and gave a lot of himself to Jamestown. So, wanted to honor him as a spotlight. So, with that, I would stand for questions.
Any questions or comments about the remainder of the report? Okay. If not, moving on our agenda, we have nothing under Old Business, under New Business, and we have nothing under Activities, Buildings and Grounds, Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, under Finance. A, Approval and Memorandum of Understanding with the James Valley Robotics Association. Is there a motion? Motion by Jamie. Is there a second? Second by Jacob. We have a motion, a second for approval of the MOU with James Valley Robotics Association. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. So, we have also approval of budget revisions for B. Is there a motion? Motion by Aaron. Second by Jason. We have motion, a second for approval of budget revisions. Any discussion? Any questions for Christie or any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. C and D, Review of General Fund Balance and Review of Monthly Financial Reports are there for your information. Any questions for Christie at all at this time on those? Okay. Under Operations, A, Agreement to Conduct Enrollment and Boundary Study. Is there a motion? Motion by Aaron. Second by Dan. We have motion, a second for Agreement to Conduct Enrollment and Boundary Study. Discussion? Jamie.
I know this was probably said at our last meeting, but what would be the timeline on that if the board approves this?
Looking at December is what I was quoted as a time, kind of aligned with Facility Committee and the recommendations that are being made. It'd be tight, but they can get it done.
So, and then, if we do with the study, then if we do need to make boundary changes, can you just talk through that process a little bit?
Sure. So, they'll provide, we have different options that I just spoke about in the progress monitoring, and they would be able to provide boundaries based on each of those. So, we would be able to see, we want to be able to communicate with people as early as possible. Number one, what option is being selected and how that would change their school environment? Because really, outside of the status quo, something's going to change, and we need to be able to inform our families, "This is where I'm going to school next year. This is where my child is going to school next year at the elementary level." So, I mean, we have four options, and three of them have some level of operational change. So, something is likely to happen. We need to be able to communicate that as soon as possible. We want people to understand, "Where am I going to school next year?" And we also don't want to be making changes where we did this. Now, we made a different facility change, and now we're moving back again, and this is happening. We want to make one change once, so people understand, moving forward, I have to make a change, but after that, I don't need to, you know, this is the boundary study long-term. So, we need to be able to do that in the spring to communicate what those options are and, you know, what's going to be happening, and then that boundary piece.
And I think that's going to be an important piece for us. Melissa?
Just a point of clarification. The District Office would also be able to do some of, not to the extent that the survey company, but it could be done within our current employees that we have.
Correct. So, now I have done cohort modeling. What is before you is a demographer, much more scientific, much more in-depth, expectations of greater accuracy. I've done the best I can do, which is cohort modeling, taking, you know, over a ten-year span, taking kindergarten, move to first grade, move to second grade, move to third grade, down, down, and down, and then taking an average of elementary's numbers, and that being our new kindergarten class, and again, just moving them down. That is not as accurate. What an enrollment study would do is base that on a lot of different factors from birth rates to, you know, age of, you know, the demographics around the community, size of homes, economic conditions, take all of those factors and make a much more scientific approach to that calculation. I can get, I can tell you what I think based on cohorts. They're going to be a lot more accurate than I am. With the boundary study, again, that's something that we could look at a map and draw a line and say, "Here's where we think," and we can even do some level of GPS. We already looked at that a little bit, you know, what can we do, use through Power School to GPS plot, and there'd be a cost to do some of those things anyway. But we could do that and just say, "We think," and then draw a line at this avenue or in that street and say, "This is, you know, these individuals are going to this school." A demographer is going to be able to look at that and say, "Looking at our enrollment projections in this area, here's the controls you want for enrollment, so this is how large you want this school to be at a maximum." And they can outline those boundaries in a much more accurate way than I can. So, yes, I can do it. You're paying for a greater level of accuracy. So, I mean, if the board says, "No, this isn't something that we support," I would do cohort modeling, and I would do the best that I can with a boundary study. If we do, if the board approves a boundary study, you can feel a lot more, in an enrollment study, you feel a lot more comfortable in the demographics.
Any other questions? Aaron.
So, the consequence of that, then, that lack of accuracy, if we went with just the internal-generated model, would just be, we'd be bouncing people around, potentially kind of telling them they're going to be going one place one day, and then find out when the actual enrollments hit, that then we'd have to bounce them over to somewhere else.
Yeah, you might, and you could be doing that with, you know, a family that has lived in a certain area. They've always gone to Lincoln. And then we redraw the line, and suddenly, they're going to another building. And then, five years later, we could see overcrowding in a building and change those boundary lines again and force people to move to another place. There's a much greater, there's always a chance for redrawing boundary lines. We haven't done it in decades in Jamestown. We haven't had to. But the fear would be, if you do it without, you know, that level of specificity and accuracy, that you might be redrawing them again, to your point.
Any other discussion? Dan.
Just kind of a general question about the, so one of the deliverables they'll have is the model methodology. So, would you take care of that, or would we have any kind of input on that? So would you take care of that, or would we have any kind of input on that, critically analyzing what that methodology includes?
We would not weigh in on, that would be their methodology to, it's what they've done, it's what they do. We don't have a lot of insight into how they could do that better. There wouldn't be a lot of...
It'd be more for our understanding to know how we would...
Correct. Yep. Yeah, and you could actually look, his methodology, we have, if you want to look historically back, we've had enrollment studies done, and you can see what that methodology is. He outlines that in one of his slides.
Okay.
And if you want, I can probably track that down and share it with you, but he does share that.
Okay.
Rob Schwartz, I mean, RSP and Associates, who we've used in the past.
Any other discussion? Okay. So we have a motion, a second for approval of the agreement to conduct enrollment and boundary study. I think we've had good discussion on this. And I also, the cost was a little more than I was anticipating as well, but I guess costs for everything have been going up. But I feel like it's, with some of the steps that we're looking at, it's a stepping stone, I think, for us. With that, Christie, any other discussion? If not, Christie, do a roll call vote for us.
Heidi Larson.
Yes.
Jason Rohr.
Yes.
Jacob Meyer.
Yes.
Dan Twetton.
Yes.
Aaron Roberts.
Yes.
Melissa Gleason.
No.
Owen McKenna.
Yes.
Jamie Behr.
Yes.
Okay, pass.
Motion approved. Moving on to our personnel, we have the superintendent evaluation timeline. So if you have received an email from Amy, like I have, requesting information from you, please complete that as soon as possible. And I will be taking the results of that and meeting with Dr. Leck Monday or Tuesday, probably Monday next week. We're finding a time that works with our schedules. So please complete that information so we have time to compile it. And like I said, I was one that she did emails, so check your emails, see what you're missing. And she'll continue to follow up with those that don't continue to send the things in. Any questions on that at all or comments? Okay. Under policy and procedures, A, approval of a secondary reading of policy, DKBB, contracted staff resignations and requests for release from contract with subsequent DKBB-Br granting a release from contract. Is there a motion? It's our second reading. Is there a motion? Dan? Motion by Dan, is there a second? Second by Aaron, we have a motion, a second for approval of the second reading of the listed policies and exhibit. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We have nothing under tuition, nothing under other items for future agenda. Are there any items for future agenda? If not, please let Dr. Leck or myself know. Under meetings to be scheduled, we have school board meeting on Monday, November 4th, 2024, at 5:30 PM in the Thompson Room in the middle school. Any other meetings that I missed? We have board member orientation that day as well.
Yes.
And orientation at 4:30.
Community Task Force.
And the Community Task Force on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. And what, do you have a time for that?
At 5:00.
5:00 PM. So the Community Task Force is also meeting on Tuesday, the 29th, at 5:00 PM in this room. Okay? Anything else that I've missed for meetings? Okay. All right. If not, your monthly superintendent evaluation is Section 4, Curriculum and Student Support Services, and Section 6, Operations and Resource Management. There being no further business before the board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1747.53][1747.53]